Call to order the Board of Grant County Commissioners, regular meeting of July 23, 2015. Welcome, everybody. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among
Madam Manager, is there any changes need to come to the regular meeting agenda?
No, sir.
Can I get a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda?
Second.
There's a motion, a proper second, to approve the irregular meeting agenda. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, stick your five to say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public input. During this portion of our meeting, we're welcome to, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. So this one, I'd like to start with George. I know he's got a report on tourism for us.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me? Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Permission to approach?
Absolutely.
Magazines?
What I've presented to you Commissioners is three of the publications of the Tucson marketplace, Sokolow Desert Leaf and Edible Baja. These are three of the publications that we are regularly marketing in. We continue to stay the course of our marketing campaign that's designed for larger, more prominent placements with greatest impact. We continue to focus on what we think are the primary drivers based on our surveys of visitors to Silver City and surrounding area, and that's primary is outdoors, outdoor recreation, Hila National Forest and the Cliff dwellings as prime drivers along with City of Rocks and many of our other outdoor assets. And then our surveys tell us that secondarily, the prime destination is historic downtown Silver City and festivals and events, food and culture. So you'll see in those three publications in particular, because these are their summer, our summer campaign specifically targeting Tucson. It's very hot there and you'll see these absolutely stunning full-page, two-page spread images of the Hila River, of the Hila National Forest, shade, coolness. This is what is going to drive Tucsonans to come to Silver City in the heat of 105 to 110 degrees, we believe. And that same imagery that you see there is also wrapped on a, they have a new trolley system, an electric streetcar that travels through the heart of their downtown, their arts and cultural district through a primary of the University of Arizona, and we've wrapped one of those images that you see in that publication on one of the streetcars. So we have a moving billboard for the Hila Cliff dwellings, moving through the urban setting of Tucson, which is fantastic. I happened to be there recently, early in the morning, doing a morning walk, and the trolley happened to come by, and it happened to be our trolley. So I'm very pleased to see that it's a very dynamic outdoor image in a, you know, all urban environment, so it stands out very nicely, very beautifully. I'm here to give my year-end report, and I'm very pleased to say that this has been a wonderful year for Silver City surrounding area. The metrics are showing that we have movement in the right direction across the board, from visitors at the visitor center to all of the major attractions that we partner up with for statistical reporting. In general, we're seeing for the year at the visitor center, a 20% increase in traffic flow over the previous year, and we, in the fourth quarter, we had record numbers over the past three years. So things, I believe, are moving in the right direction. I'm very pleased with all of that. And in particular, I think the partnership with Grant County Tourism Board and Silver City has been instrumental in that effort. I want to highlight the work that they do and the work that we've done together has been fantastic, and you've heard me speak of that before. We're partnering up in, both in media planning, content development, as well as media placements. So I think that's really encouraging for me that we're working so closely together. And I think that's what's leading to a lot of these results. The metrics also tell us consistently that we're drawing from our target markets, which are New Mexico, Arizona, Texas and California. New Mexico, Arizona, Texas are our prime drive markets, of course. They continue consistently to show in the top three, so we are reaching that audience. And consistently, we're seeing California and Colorado, as we should, following in those metrics. We still continue, when we look at some of these statistics, they're coming from all over the United States. They're coming from all over the world, and it's really wonderful. When we look at, when we look at some of the international for the year, we're seeing a tremendous amount from Canada. This is the order in which, over the year, Canada, Mexico, Germany, United Kingdom, Australia, Switzerland, Netherlands, France, Brazil and New Zealand in the top 10. And that's, you know, from 291 visitors from Canada, 164 from Mexico over the course of the year, trickling on down to, you know, as I've pointed out, you know, some of the faraway places, like one from Bavaria and Morocco and Russia. So, you know, it continues to be a really wonderful experience at the visitor center to encounter these people coming from all over. We continue to see that, you know, friends and family are the driving force always in destination decision-making, and so what I encourage all of us is, we all have friends and family that we've been trying to get to Silver City to visit us, and now's the time. We have a wonderful 101 Things to Do postcard at the visitor center. I encourage all of you, come on down. You can leave us with addresses, or you can take postcards with you. We also have that wonderful reprint that we did of the 25 Things to Love About Silver City, partnership with New Mexico Magazine that continues to yield in big ways for us. If anybody has people they would like on our mailing list, just come on down, give us names, we'll make sure that every time we do one of our bulk mailings, your family and friends are getting Silver City, Grant County reminders that this is a great place to visit and a wonderful place to live. With that, I'm going to keep it really short today and open it up if you have any questions for me.
A real interesting thing about Canada, you know why we're drawing your attention more so than other countries that you mentioned?
You know, we don't have, we did entertain a Canadian writer. We hosted a Canadian writer this past year, and we did get some press up there in the equivalent to sort of AARP, if you will. So we did get a little press from that. The state is advertising up in the Chicago area, and particularly in airports and some of the publications up there. You know, so there, New Mexico has a presence close to Canada. I think, if I were to just sort of take a guess at it, you know, I think Canadians, there's a, all those prime countries that I mentioned, there is a fascination with the Old West. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we have something here that is so unique in the world, has great visibility from, you know, thanks to John Wayne and all those guys back in the day. The world knows about Geronimo. The world knows about Billy the Kid, and they really want to get a taste of what that's all about. So, you know, that's why Germany continues to be consistent. We know they're huge travelers to this southwest area in general. And so that's my educated guess. I can't say that we can take any credit for it.
You need to make sure that they talk to Mr. Perez, our local expert on southwest history.
Absolutely. And, you know, that's where we drive them towards our cultural centers to make sure that they get a taste of what that's all about.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now, I believe we have the Forest Service here. You guys, okay. Go ahead and introduce yourselves, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairperson, Commissioners, elected officials. My name is Matt Schultz. I am the planner for the Hila National Forest.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, elected officials. I'm Diane Tolyo Faro. I'm the new Silver City District Ranger on the Hila.
Glad to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
And we would like to invite Grant County officials and constituents to a Forest Plan Community Meeting. As presented to the Commission previously, the Hila National Forest is in the process of revising a land management plan that has been in place almost 30 years. And all interested parties are invited to contribute to the first phase of the plan revision process, the assessment phase, where social, economic and ecological condition and trends will be identified related to the Hila National Forest. The conditions and trends found in the assessments will be used to identify where the current plan needs to be changed, as well as aid in the development of the revised plan. The goals for the upcoming meetings are to create common understanding of the forest plan and key assessment topics, provide stakeholders an opportunity to share knowledge, plans and data for the assessment, identify values, uses and concerns related to the Hila National Forest that the communities have, and continue dialogue between the forest and nearby residents, users and interested parties. The community meetings scheduled in Grant County are in Silver City on August 5 at 5:00 PM at the Grant County Conference Center, and in Membrus on August 6, starting at 10:00 AM at the Thunderbird Lodge. Both meetings will last approximately two hours. We do have flyers, both for the Commissioners and also at the entrance table for anyone that is interested. The Forest also received Grant County's letter requesting coordinating agency status, and a response letter will be forthcoming.
Good morning. It's such a pleasure to meet all of you. I just wanted to share that the Hila National Forest just did an accomplishment report for 2013, 2014, so we have those on the back table. I have copies, Commissioners, for you. And I also wanted to mention that my new boss, our new Forest Supervisor, Adam Mendonca, is here now. He's been here for a week. He will be at the public meetings next week, so if you have an opportunity to come to meet Adam and myself, we greatly appreciate that. So can I approach?
Absolutely.
And drop these off, and then if you have any questions or comments, we're happy to answer them.
Okay.
You'll also be happy to know that the new Forest Supervisor actually grew up in Silver City and is returning home.
We know Adam. Thanks, guys.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, at this time, we'll stand for any further public input today. Yes. Sorry, I wasn't looking over there, Raul.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to say, my name is Raul Torrieta, you're a Grant County Assessor, and on Monday, we're going to have a hike for the kids for the one-on-one thing to do, and we're going to be meeting in, at the Little Walnut Park, the actual park. Secondly, the gentleman that's going to speak behind me is Mr. Daniel Henry, and I've known this gentleman for the last five, six years. And I spoke with Katz Station, where I can do this on my own video production, is I'm going to show a video called the EIS Council Electric Infrastructure Security, and I was allowed to show it on Katz. And we did speak to the NACO advisors. I thought that we're going to talk about the power grid here in the United States, and I'll just hand it over to Mr. Henry. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Mr. Henry.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, elected officials and wherever the TV camera is, citizens of Silver City and Grant County. I also own a little sliver of property in Silver City, so I count myself among the lucky group. And I'm here to share what I have been sharing with Raul for the past set of years. The film that he's referring to will be shown at a later time, is that what I understand?
That is correct.
All right. It's a four-minute, 13-minute film, a second film, and I recommend everyone look at it. This film was briefed by national-level Homeland Security. Their headquarters for critical infrastructure, physical security, is in INL, the nuclear labs up by Idaho Falls. I'm from Idaho. And the cybersecurity headquarters for Homeland Security is also co-located there. At the request of my county commissioner, Larry Shown from Blaine County, they sent a briefer over to the Idaho Association of County meeting in February of 2014. And the subject matter is actually one of these when, not if, the words they use are inevitable. The government at highest levels is anticipating loss of the total power grid, and that period may be for at least months, if not years, and some of the upward 10 trending estimates are for a decade. Though the latest stories on this type of adverse situation, you can read about in the Wall Street Journal from 29 April, there was a report from Keith Alexander, former head of the NSA, addressing the Aspen Institute, very high-level audience. There is a when, not if situation. We're going to lose the power grid. The Wall Street Journal stories with Jim Woolsey, ex-CIA director, refer to the upper level of estimates of 90% of the total US population perishing, euphemistic word obviously for dying, within 365 days of loss of the power grid. There are a number of these articles out that you can follow up on. Raul has located on his telephone some of the key articles, Loss of Nine, FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, a former head of that. He came out with an article, March 13, I believe, of 2014, which was in the Wall Street Journal, talks about if only nine of the total biggest 350 transformer stations, one of which is just below me, up in Blaine County, if only nine of those go down, the entire 350 could cascade because of supercharges and everything else going on in the system. So what's happened is, NACO itself was going to have a workshop, as far as I understand it, back in their 2014 meeting in Washington, yet it was called off. And we just through Raul's office, we were calling to find out if they're anticipating putting something else on the agenda for any of you that may be attending a future NACO commission. The film, which he mentioned, is, should be accompanied by watching a National Geographic film called Cosmic Fire. This is a 44-minute main film, which was not, apparently, I haven't found it, not shown on TV, but it is, appears only on their YouTube channel. And it came out in May 31 of 2012. Again, if what we're talking about is so alarming, why hasn't it happened yet? That's not the consideration. It is and retains a when, not if category. Trent Franks, which is a sitting congressman from Arizona, is head of the Congressional EMP Caucus. They have not yet been able to get any legislation through on a national level, and the message to you at the county and to the state is going to be, you're going to have to take this on your own. You're going to have to learn to decentralize and come up and categorize alternative methods of power, work with your school districts and things like that to get some brainstorming going on in the kids, which will be the future generation that's going to have to solve this if it doesn't happen now. So these situations, I would be glad to help, and through Raul or whatever, pass whatever new information comes along. Fox News and CNN did an interview of Peter Vincent Pry, and I believe there was Henry Cooper, the former ambassador to Star Wars, was on there as well, questioning why hasn't there been enough traction in getting this, whether it be the S.H.I.E.L.D. Act, or the Grid Act, or currently in Congress is the Critical Infrastructure Security Act, I believe is what it's called. They're not moving on a subcommittee. So I highly recommend somebody in your staff, start looking at what's going on on a national level on this, raise the question with NACO, are you going to do something? We'd really like to know more about this. Last week, I briefed the Idaho State Director of Commerce. I met him at a forum up in Sun Valley on resilience, what can local areas do? Does that mean that five minutes is up? Is that what that sound is? Okay. Anyway, that's it. I'd like to just let you know, you need to be thinking about it for the people that live here. There will be no water, no sewage, no banks, no power, no pills coming in the mail, no diesel, no fuel, no nothing. And 110 nuclear facilities in the US need electricity for coolant. You could have Fukushima's everywhere. Any questions?
Any questions for the gentleman?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further public input today? Go ahead. Not now? Okay, anybody else? Further public input? Going on?
Good morning. My name is Luis Perez. I'm Mr. Chairman, members of the County Commission, members of the staff, the press and general public. I've always been interested in seeing the fact that we might have a five-member board in the County Commission. And I see the many problems that have come about and have grown. Government is becoming more complex, many, many things relating to major issues which have to be solved, and the fact that it is a great burden for three people to handle all these responsibilities. I think that it could be better handled by a five-member board. You have matters of financial, financial matters. We have economic development, which is something I have always pushed, and I'm not sure that we have a real economic development program. Certainly, work on the airport would help, the development of a park south of the airport. We have all the natural resources, water and other issues, which today are certainly in the news. We have law enforcement and things relating to that. We need to support these programs. I'm also very concerned with our tourism program, tourism programs, because I've been very active in that in the past. Certainly, I think that we're lacking a convention center, a convention department. If it isn't being handled somewhere else, maybe the county could handle it, because it would bring groups, that would bring business and money to Silver City, Grant County establishments. The whole point is that I think that the citizens of Grant County would have more representation with the election of a five-member commission. Thank you.
Sounds like a perfect segue into the next hearing. Unless there's anybody else wants to talk about something other than the five-man commission? I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity. Okay, then we'll move on to the public hearing. Public input pertaining to the proposed ordinance increasing the size of the Board of Grant County Commissioners to five members pursuant to Article X, Section 7 of the New Mexico Constitution. This will be considered at the August 27, 2015 Commissioners' Meeting. We've been asked a couple of questions throughout the last, this is our fourth public hearing. I want to make sure we had all the opportunity for the public to voice their opinion that we could. The two main questions we've been asked is why, is one of them, and I think that, I speak for the other Commissioners, because I've heard them talk about this during meetings, that the reason why this is being proposed is because when we were campaigning, that was one of the main, one of the main things people asked about, is why not five-person commission? That's why it's on the agenda. And two, the other question we've been asked is how much is it going to cost? Well, we actually broke that down. Nothing's exact, because you never know how much a new Commissioner's going to travel or not travel, things like that. But realistically, for a full year, which the first year would only be a half a year in the fiscal year, for a full year, each Commissioner would cost approximately $52,000. Is that correct? So those are the two main questions that have been brought forth on this item. So at this time, I will open it up for public input pertaining to the proposed ordinance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Councilors Ramos and Hall, good morning.
Good morning.
I want to thank you. It's great to be home again. I haven't been over to these meetings for five weeks or better. I've been traveling around China, various places in China for over a month, to enhance my education about other people, their cultures and their countries.
Why don't you introduce yourself?
I'm Art Martinez.
Thank you.
And resident of Grant County for over 40 years. Came here out of California from my PhD program, University of California, and after teaching there a little bit, I came up here to the Hill to help out in Grant County, New Mexico. And so I'm a retired university professor, and I had as one of my focus areas, international relations, so that naturally moved me around to other places on the globe. This topic, this development having to do with the consideration for a larger membership on the Grant County Commission has been of large interest to me all along. I would have been here earlier, but that's one reason I said a couple of things already before. And I think it's one of, as you yourself, Mr. Chairman, mentioned, is a very bold, critical, I'll add that word, vital issue that has come before us in a very long time. Now, I would say that whenever political entities anywhere in our nation engage in the process of political and electoral redistricting, that there is, I believe, and along with a lot of other people believe, that there is wide, wide agreement with the proposition that the basic civil rights and the basic voting rights of all our residents must not be infringed, must not be violated. be infringed, must not be violated, everywhere, anytime, if we can bring that commitment to everybody. Most residents of Grand County Nuevo Mexico seriously expect, we believe, seriously expect that each one of you will consistently provide us with sufficient guarantees with regard to the protection of these very basic electoral and representational rights. Not privileges we're talking about here, something like that. We're talking about the vital civil rights of people, constituents, residents, citizens. As you continue to prepare to cast your individual, individual vote, we're not playing follow-the-leader in Grand County all the time pertaining to these vital issues that I have mentioned. Some respectable electoral studies, and I have a file this wide on this, and I'm still researching, have concluded and maintained that a so-called safe and successful majority-minority representational district anywhere, a particular protected minority group, let us say, because it's 44 to 52% Hispanic in Grand County, as an example, that we must take serious note that in some certain cases, that communities in our nation have already been designated or defined, they're considered to be protected electoral communities, African-Americans and others, Native Americans. In some cases, therefore, I want to emphasize that such protections have been mandated, mandated by certain of our federal courts, and in some cases where necessary and appropriate, state governments have stepped in to address these important factual things having to do with what we're up to in Grand County, it seems now. We should move cautiously, carefully. Great deliberation, which I certainly am one who appreciates, that not simply three meetings for this, but four, and appreciate it. Experience, experience has taught me, because I've heard people bandying about the position that, well, we're gonna have better government, that's why, period. We're bound to have it, almost like it would naturally, by some, let's say, amazing political way, come naturally. But it's taught me that more representation, more representation does not necessarily provide, much less does it guarantee, that any politically constructed representational or jurisdictional entity or unit will automatically introduce, much less bring about, good government, better government, or more favorable representation. And neither would that automatically come to government in general. We are, we're becoming more awake to some of these realities. As someone once said, and I believe it was my brother, Senator Bob Martinez in Colorado, he said, hey, look, Art, it's somewhat of a political crapshoot. We've gone through some of this out here in Colorado. No sabemos. No sabemos. He followed up with, there could, for example, be legal hassles. I will conclude, Mr. Chairman, with what I consider to be an important truth and reality of sorts. Of this whole matter, we will have formally discussed, and we have and we will, before and after the voting, part of this takes place. That could happen today, right? I mean, in certain senses, the vote itself won't, but you will, we'll be setting something in place that we can all understand a bit better. Once you say, "We intend to," those are pretty serious words for all of us out here to understand the best we can. You've pretty well said that you have come to some conclusions. You're setting things into pretty serious place. And we are definitely addressing a fundamentally critical policy procedural question that could conceivably open the doors to many serious and long-term changes. Change can be good, change can be terrible, for golly sake. There's no one position on that. The only thing someone said that is sure in the future is change. Long-term changes for our several communities of folks. We have several communities of folks, and we're searching for what has been mentioned time and again, for unity among all. But we do have several very defined communities of folks in Grand County, New Mexico. Hell, I've been here 40-some years. We've been working on that problem for a long time.
A minute.
Yeah, well, at a hearing, well, I'll go a little faster.
Okay.
But thank you for allowing me to go a little faster and finish, because I'm near it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We should not overlook the procedural fact that it will not be the approximately 20,500 registered voters of Grand County who will be eligible to cast their vote for or against increasing our Board of County Commissioners from three to five members. Hell, why not 13? Someone asked in the back room. It will only be the one, two, three of you that will be making that decision for the 30,000 of us out here who have this much or that much of interest in this, in the first Buena suerte. We can all surely use more than a small amount of that for our future. I wanna thank you very much again for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further public input pertaining to the proposed ordinance of increasing the size of the Board of County Commissioners. Yes, Linda, please come up.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. That's a tough act to follow. I wish to expand on remarks I've made in the past. I know how I've spoken to each of you on this subject, but as this is the last opportunity, I wanna make it very clear, at least, what my opinions are.
And my name?
My name is Linda Pafford.
Thank you.
Thank you. One, as the first gentleman alluded to, a five-member commission would allow you to further separate tasks. I know you all are very busy with all the different issues that come before the commission, and there are so many more that we would like you to tackle. So, that's one reason in favor of the commission being expanded. That Grand County has a much larger population than when this commission was established. So, we are eligible, as you know, to expand these divisions into, excuse me, into less numbers of people per commissioner, so that you could better represent each group. I am concerned, however, while I am very much in favor of expanding to the five-person commission, I am concerned that these maps divide traditional sub-communities. And A and B in particular give heavy expansion to the, quote, "white voter" population, and seem to divide the Hispanic groups into less, I can't think of the word I'm looking for, giving them less power in the voting booth for their district representation. A and B in particular are the worst. I've gone through the numbers, and if you look at the split up. Now, I also recognize that the distinction between white and Hispanic in the phone book is not easy to tell. The names are interchanged, traditional families have married and unmarried, and, you know, just by the names is not necessarily going to indicate what is white and what is Hispanic. But just looking at traditional neighborhoods, A and B is very much dividing groups and re-lumping groups, such as Penosantos, being lumped in with the western cattle-raising C, at least, keeps downtown intact mostly. I am very much in favor of the five-man commission, five-person commission. I am concerned that the single agency that we have available to draw these maps may not have actually talked to people here about where our traditional neighborhoods lie, and how they might be incorporated into voting blocks. So, I hope you will consider very closely whether or not these maps are doing Grand County a service, and sort of don't even think about A and B. So, I thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak, public input pertaining to the proposed ordinance increasing the size? You guys wanna fight over it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's always difficult for me, and Anthony Gutierrez, I'm a Grand County resident, it's always difficult to me to try and differentiate my opinion as a resident of Grand County and also be a staff member sometimes. But not necessarily in favor or against the five-man commission, I just want to have a couple of comments about how people misconception about representation on the commission. Usually, representation is directly related to an improvement to an infrastructure, some type of policy-driven, there's a lot of things that people feel as representation. We can see when people want, you know, some recreational facility, or they want a road improved, or they want some things that they may or may not be able to have, they directly relate that to representation of their elected officials. I don't see, from a planning perspective, now, as a staff member, I don't see any more money to be able to satisfy those things. We just talked about, I think, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned a $52,000 per commissioner cost to the county. Well, in the year 2000, I was a road superintendent, and we had 33 staff members at the road department. I think currently we have 23. So, we've never even been able to recover the staff that the road department had, you know, 15 years ago. There was enough work then that we were shorthanded, so I could only imagine what Earl and his crew face nowadays. And I know since then, the road superintendents continually come to the manager, whether it's the previous managers or this manager, and request additional funding for, whether it's for fuel, for infrastructure improvement, for personnel, and only to be denied because there's not enough funds. This past year, because we have done all it, because I have done all it, I'm a department head, originally we were asked to propose a budget, and of course, it's no fault of our current manager, I feel that she's doing an excellent job, but we were also asked to take a 5% decrease in our overall budgets. Now, that was an email, it didn't happen, she was able to do whatever she needed to do to give us a flat budget, and that's great. But fact is, is that the way I see it as a resident of Grand County, is that Earl could use $100,000 every year. He could use $100,000 for the things that he needs. We had a request yesterday for potential capital improvement for a chip-sprider. Three years of $100,000, we'll, you know, we'll pay for that. So, while it's difficult for me to see as a staff member, like I said, being here for 18 years, seeing what's happened throughout those years, I feel that we have excellent representation. We have for all of those years, I've been through about eight sets of commissioners already. There's jurisdictions that have commissioners that represent hundreds of thousands of people. There's jurisdictions that have commissioners that represent hundreds of thousands of people, just how serious they take their duty as a commissioner. And so whether or not you choose to do this, I've dealt with many commissioners, and each have their own agendas, and each have their own representation of their constituents. But I feel that, in my opinion, in my opinion as a resident of Grant County, that that money could better served utilizing it in their needs for the county.
Thank you. Henry, you had your hand up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, elected official staff. I'm Henry Torres, Grant County resident.
And past chairman of the county commission.
Yes. So I've been where you are, and I'm where all three of you are, and I'm going to dwell on that a little. Grant County and a few other counties in New Mexico are the only governing boards that are made up of three members. I know of no other government entity or government subdivision that is made up as few as a three-member governing board. I can tell you from past experience that a three-member governing board is not a three-member governing board, it is a one-member governing board. Because among you three, and I don't know which one it is, and that's immaterial, among you three, there is one that is stronger-willed and more aggressive than the other two. So in reality, what you have is a one-member board. Having said that, your other issue is the cost of a five-member commission as opposed to a three-member commission. It does not have to cost Grant County or any other county anymore for five members that it does three members. You just divide that budget by five instead of three. Let me say that serving as a public official, as a volunteer, or any other position in government was initially by our forefathers created to serve your community, not as a livelihood, not as a career, but to serve your community. So having said that, thank you for your time, and appreciate you bringing back in Grant County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else that'd like to speak on the public input pertaining to the proposed ordinance to increase the number of county commissioners? Okay, we're going to move on. Move into minutes. Approve or disapprove the June 25, 2015 regular meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and second to approve the June 25, 2015 regular meeting minutes? Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six to five, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports. Approve or disapprove July 20, 2015 expenditure reports? Linda, can you do the highlights on those for us real quick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In front of you is an expenditure report for a total amount of $2,156,374.64 included, and this is a total AP checks in the amount of $1,726,554.36. In that sum, there is a total, there is a check to Holly Frontier Refinery in the amount of $104,981.40, and this is for the 2015 road special projects. A check to Malloy Dodge in the amount of $25,600, and this is for a police truck at the sheriff's department. A check to Ascent Aviation in the amount of $91,787.51, and this is for the June fuel and lease payment for the fuel truck at the airport. There is a check to the city of Baird in the amount of $9,161.84, and this is for the fiscal year 2015 library funding. A check to WH Pacific in the amount of $16,546.95, and this is for the airport action plan for professional services. A check to Wendy Crisp in the amount of $5,328.88, and this is for a lease payment tower for the sheriff's office. There is a check to Tyler Technologies in the amount of $32,909.41. This is for the software license renewal for the fiscal year 2015-2016 for the Eagle Recorder software. There is a check to Architecture Workshop in the amount of $8,081.25, and this is for the architectural services at the conference center and the evidence vault for the sheriff's office. There is a check to the New Mexico County Insurance Authority in the amount of $226,005, and this is for the workers' compensation premium insurance for the fiscal year 2016. A check to Wright Express Fuel in the amount of $31,409.36, and this is for the June 2015 fuel for our fleet. And there is also included in this expenditure report payroll checks for pay period thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, and for the academic incentive pay for fiscal year 2016 for a total of $429,820.28. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Linda.
Thank you.
Any questions on the expenditure report?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the July 20, 2015 expenditure report.
Second. Motion second to approve the July 20, 2015 expenditure report. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six to five, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is to approve or disapprove the proclamation proclaiming August 1, 2015 is Davila Day. Denisha, would you please read the proclamation?
The Spanish Grand proclamation Davila Day, whereas it is believed that Aureliano Davila left Spain with his wife Francesca in late 1700s, early 1800s, and traversed huge, huge and dangerous bodies of water, eventually disembarking in Mexico. And whereas Aureliano and Francesca Davila had a son named Refugio, who married Teresa Romo, and whereas Refugio and Teresa Davila settled in San Luis Fotosi, Mexico area, and had a son named Juan. And whereas Juan Davila married Teodora Lopez and had two sons, Gabriel and Jose, and two daughters, Amelia and Abigail. And whereas Juan and Teodora Davila immigrated to New Mexico in the mid-1800s and homesteaded in Pinos Altos, New Mexico, where Juan mined silver and gold. And whereas Juan and Teodora's son Gabriel married Belen Portillo and as well, homesteaded in Pinos Altos and had four daughters, Clara, Luiza, Teresa, and Maria de la Luz, and one son, Antonio. And whereas Gabriel and Belen Davila's family contributed immensely to the development of the West, to include amongst others, having a grandson Ben Davila Altamirano, son of Luiza, who was a well-known businessman in Grant County, served in the military, and later served as Silver City Town Councilman, Grant County Commissioner, and New Mexico State Senator. A granddaughter, Alicia Davila y Arzaga de Carlosa, as well, a successful businesswoman in Silver City. Another grandson, Juan Davila Lopez, son of Maria de la Luz, who served as a paratrooper with the Green Beret, earned a PhD, and worked as a professor, administrator, and whereas, and, excuse me, and as well, served in the Silver City Town Councilman, later becoming the first Hispanic mayor of Silver City. A grand niece, Margaret D. Fletcher y Ryan de Alvarado, granddaughter of Gabriel's sister, Amelia, who served as county clerk in Grant County. A grand nephew, Thomas J. D. Fletcher y Ryan, as well, a grandson of Amelia, who served in the military and later became chief of police for the town of Silver City. A great granddaughter, Lisa Munson, daughter of John, who earned an MBA, served as assistant state director of Small Business Development Center, and is now a licensed occupational therapist. And whereas all other Davila descendants served and continue to serve the state and the country in various ways, to include military service, hard rock mining, education, and other trades and professions, thereby adding in the development of Pinos Altos, New Mexico, and the United States of America. Now therefore, be it resolved that the commemoration of the Davilas and significant contribution to New Mexico and the country, August 1, 2015, be proclaimed Davila Day in Pinos Altos, New Mexico.
Thank you, Denisha. I don't believe we have a representative from the Davila Altamirano Ryan Alvarado family here today, right? Okay. Well then, the chair to accept a motion to approve or disapprove the proclamation proclaiming August 1, 2015 is Davila Day.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proclamation proclaiming August 1, 2015 is Davila Day. I worked for one of these gentlemen for twenty-five years, so I know the family well.
And I second that motion. Motion to proper second to approve the August 1, 2015 is Davila Day. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six to five, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. D, approve or disapprove the Grant County Sheriff's Department use of force policy? We went through all of these policies Tuesday pretty thoroughly. Sheriff, do you have anything to add on? Well, I'm going to ask you on each one, so.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to add.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the Grant County Sheriff's Department use of force policy two.
Second. There's a motion and second to approve the Grant County Sheriff's Department use of force policy two. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six to five, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Grant County Sheriff's Department's vehicular pursuit policy seven?
I have nothing to add, sir.
Okay.
Sheriff, I'd like to make a motion to approve Grant County Sheriff's Department vehicular pursuit policy seven.
And I second. There's a motion to approve the Grant County Sheriff's Department vehicular pursuit policy seven. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six to five, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Grant County Sheriff's Department retention period and release of Sheriff Department records policy number thirty-four? Sheriff?
I have nothing further.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Grant County Sheriff's Department retention period and release of Sheriff's Department records policy number thirty-four.
Second. There's a motion and second to approve the Grant County Sheriff's Department retention period and release of Sheriff Department records policy thirty-four. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six to five, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Grant County Sheriff's Department use of X-26 Advanced Taser Policy number forty-seven?
Sheriff.
Sheriff?
To approve.
That's fine. You said nothing.
Sheriff?
Motion to approve the Grant County Sheriff's Department use of the X-26 Advanced Taser Policy forty-seven.
And I second. There's a motion and second to approve the Grant County Sheriff's Department use of X-26 Advanced Taser Policy number twenty-seven. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six to five, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the delinquent solid waistlings? Mr. Treasurer, I see Ted's here. Do you guys have anything to add to any of this? No? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the delinquent solid waistlings.
Second.
There's a motion and second to approve the delinquent solid waistlings. Any discussion on that motion?
I just want to make sure that we do everything possible to get a hold of them again. I know that sometimes that's the excuse, so if we can do that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six to five, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, next item on the agenda, we have the ACLU here to have, to discuss the detention center oversight committee, or the discussion of a detention center oversight committee. If you'll please come forward, introduce yourself and...
Good morning, Chairman Casta and commissioners, officials. The members of the ACLU chapter are grateful for this opportunity to address you today. I'm Bill Hudson. I'm the president of the local chapter. For a number of years, our chapter has been very active in monitoring both the Grant County Detention Center and the Luna County Detention Center. The, our monitoring of the Grant County Detention Center began years ago when they had the old deal on Black Street behind the courthouse. We were very pleased when we saw the development of the new deal. However, at one time, there was a, a Grant County, I believe it was called, a Grant County Detention Center Advisory Committee that was active and that was allowed to discontinue or was, I'm not sure what the process was that brought about the discontinuance of that policy. But since that time, our local chapter has been very active in trying to take up many of the activities that would have been done by that committee, primarily to ensure that the civil liberties of inmates were being upheld. We've been pleased, very pleased, I would have to say, by the welcoming atmosphere that we've had in gaining access, in speaking with the administration, and with the ability to go in toward the facility and speak with inmates. There are, however, a number of problems that we find reoccurring, and that whenever they were discussed with the administration, the usual response was, we're working on that. And I think after three years at the new facility, some of those problems should have been resolved at this point. Yesterday, I was very fortunate to have the opportunity to have a very lengthy meeting with Ms. Webb and Ms. Robinson, and we discussed a number of these issues, particularly the lack of what we feel is adequate medical care. And we're very hopeful with the fact that there seems to be some recognition of that fact, and that there is possibly some future changes to be made. They cannot come too soon. There are ongoing problems, not just with inmates, but even with the staff at the detention center, with the mail system. There needs to be a much better process for the outgoing and incoming mail. The one letter that I sent to the, to Michael Coriel, when problems were developing, I think to, well beyond what they should have done, I sent that letter from the Silver City Post Office on June the 10th. I was informed it did not arrive at the detention center until June the 20th. When I involved attorneys at the ACLU affiliate in Albuquerque, one mailing was sent, a demand letter, and a second mailing was a tort claims notice. The tort claims notice arrived at the county offices. The demand letter was returned to the ACLU in Albuquerque. We've had several complaints by inmates that documents that they have sent to the courts have failed to arrive. The documents that they have sent to the courts returned to them several weeks later opened. So that there needs to be some way of straightening this out. I realize that you have no control over the U.S. Postal Service, but I don't believe all of the problems reside there. There are problems with accountability in the commissary accounts that I discussed yesterday with Ms. Webb and Ms. Robinson. There are... There are very serious problems, I think, with the pod telephones that under contract with Securus. The, not only problems with the cost, and I realize, you know, this is a nationwide problem, it's a problem that the national ACLU is dealing with, and it's actually a problem that's much less a problem in New Mexico than any other state. I think Mexico has, New Mexico has just about the lowest inmate telephone cost of any, any state in the nation. But still, there are problems in lack of ability to get phone calls out. There are numbers that obviously have been, for some reason seem to have been blocked. We've had our own ACLU representative or board member in town whose telephone number is available to, to the inmates, and they have complained to us that they try to call from the, from the pods, and that number will not go through. I've had inmates inform us that their attempts to call bail bondsman, that the number will not go through. So that, whether it's an internal blockage of the phones, whether it's a problem with the company itself, I think these things need to be investigated and, and rectified. There is a serious problem with gender bias at the detention center. The male inmates have access to GED classes, they have access to parenting classes, they have access to trustee, trustee opportunities. I realize trustee opportunities are only available to those convicted and serving time or serving their sentence there. And I understand some of the issues involved with the trustee problem. However, the lack of GED classes, parenting classes, and other, other things like this which would help benefit the, the female inmates are not being made available. They are offered by volunteers, and the reason given repeatedly is that there aren't enough female inmates. But that is not a reason for gender bias. There must be a way to resolve this. Our most serious concern is the lack of a real workable grievance process. There is no way for an inmate or anyone else to accurately track the grievances which are turned in by inmates. There is no numbering system, they simply fill out their grievance on a sheet of paper that is collected by one of the, I believe it's collected by one of the sergeants. It is the same form, actually, I do stand corrected, I started to say it's the same form for request and for grievances, and I was informed just recently that they are implementing a new form that was for grievance only, but it is still unnumbered, unduplicated. And I have been told by inmates and by staff that some of those grievances never make it beyond the trash can in the control room. All of these things we discussed yesterday, I believe that both Ms. Webb and Ms. Robinson understand many of the problems. I was assured that Ms. Webb is working on it, and I, and she was very quick to emphasize that she's really working on it, and I'm glad to hear that. But we think that a number of these things could be resolved much sooner if there was a civilian committee made up by, you know, a small number, five to seven individuals, I think I would prefer about seven, that would have regular access, would be able to look at the policies and procedures and work with the administration in developing policies and procedures, and be able to come to you with their recommendations on a regular basis. A couple of other things sort of related to this, I think there is a very serious problem in the entire county, the lack of transparency. That, for example, if I try to find, this is all related to the detention center, if I try going to the county website and try to find information about the county detention center, it isn't there. There is a link to most of the other departments, some of them adequate, some of them not so adequate, but at least there is a link and a way of communicating to those department managers, and that's not the case with the detention center. There is no link on there. This is one of the reasons, I think, why the ACLU in Albuquerque was unable to get the one mailing through to the detention center. In the, in some, many of the neighboring counties, if I go to their website, there is a link to the detention center. In that detention center webpage, there is a link to the names of the inmates that is updated daily, so that you can, anyone can go to that page and look, to try to find a family member who didn't show up, if they suspect that they might have been arrested. Attorneys can locate people without having to call all around, so that I think that would be an additional benefit. With the upcoming vote that you're about to take on the new policies and procedures, I, I've looked them over, and I have a colleague with me who will also speak in a few moments to the advantages of, of an oversight committee. Generally, I think most of those new policies and procedures are quite good. We do have a few concerns. On the approval or disapproval of the special management of inmates, the recommendation, recommended time period for, recommended review on page three is listed as 72 hours. I think that perhaps should be changed to 48 hours. But the most critical one, I think, is on page four regarding the shaving and haircuts. There is a Supreme Court decision, I believe, that gives exemption to that for justifiable religious reasons, and I believe that should be included in your, in the policy statement. On your policies and procedures on the use of force and restraints, um, let me, I forgot On the training, page three, the training and equipment, it simply states here, "All detention officers and supervisors are trained and retrained in the following areas." I do believe that there should be some specificity on the, how often that retraining should take place. Ideally, it should be annually, but if it's biannually or whatever, there should be a bit more specificity. As I stated, many of the issues that we have been dealing with, I think, could be handled much more efficiently if there was a regular committee answerable to the council, or to the counselors, commissioners, rather, that would report to the commissioners on a regular basis regarding ongoing efforts to improve the county detention system. And I do believe everyone involved is making a sincere effort to try to improve the county detention system. Let me introduce a colleague, he's a fellow member of the ACLU Board in Albuquerque, Frank Seussman, is a, actually, he described himself the other day as a almost retired attorney now. I don't think he manages to quite get out of the picture, but he has extensive experience that I'll let him explain, in working with oversight and advisory committees for detention systems. And so, Frank? This being my very first time in Grant County, I don't know whether that's a plus or minus, but appears to be a minus, I should have been here more often, but I thank you for hearing me. Just very briefly as to why I'm here, well, first of all, it's the invitation of Bill. But background, I am semi-retired from the full-time practice of law after 46 years. I still try cases around the country for the law firm in Kansas City. And as, secondly, I, at the request, and when the federal court asks you to do something, it's not really a request, if you're a practicing lawyer, you can't say no. And I was appointed to oversee all the jail operations of the city of St. Louis. I thought maybe it might last six months, it lasted 18 years. Was not a full-time job, but for 18 years, I oversaw all the operations of the city of St. Louis. And lastly, to whatever conflicts I may have here, I am also, it's too long a story as to how and why, but I am also semi-retired lieutenant colonel of homicide. So as far as background, that's why I'm here. I think with oversight committees, and I have experience in Santa Fe, there was a prior Oversight Corrections Department Committee in Santa Fe, for some reason, the board let it lapse for two or three years, then they created a new one back in, two years ago. I was chair of that committee through its first iteration, and currently chair of the second iteration of that committee, so I have some experience with oversight committees, at least from the vantage point of the committee itself, not necessarily from the board of I think such a committee serves three major purposes. First of all, whether it achieves them or not is something else, but in my mind, there are three major purposes for such a committee. One is to decrease recidivism. I don't know, and I cannot speak for the Grant County budget, I have no experience with it, I've not seen it, perhaps I should have looked before today, but I did not, but I know in Santa Fe County, the Department of Corrections compromises 50% of the county's budget. I have no reason to know whether that's more or less in Grant County, but whatever that number is, it is clearly significant, that anything can be done to reduce it is obviously a plus. Second reason for such a committee is that it gives greater confidence to the community that some civilian group, some citizens of the county are looking at what's going on in the Department of Corrections, and not just solely relying upon the Department of Corrections to manage itself. Now, these committees, and I'm familiar with them outside of Santa Fe as well, because as part of the federal court mandate, I use the word mandate, but I was required to look at over those, that period of time, probably 20 or more various county jails, how they operated within their county, and their connections for the county and oversight committees when they existed as such. But it gives that extra degree of confidence. Now, these committees, none of them that I've ever seen, and certainly not Santa Fe County, these committees have no power nor authority to do anything, to require anything to be done, to make any changes, all they can do is recommend, and that's all they should do. But they come to their assignment with a different viewpoint and an unjaundiced view of what is going on with the jail. The jail is a major institution in this county and every other county. The fact of the budget, that's a major concern, but if, if this committee could do anything to achieve its goal of lowering the inmate population, you will see significant savings. In addition, they serve a third purpose in my mind. In Santa Fe County, and I have no reason to believe it's any different here, because in other counties I've looked at, not only New Mexico, but Missouri and other states, 75 to 80% of those incarcerated in that facility have serious alcohol, drug, and/or mental health problems. And jails are not equipped to handle these problems. That's not their purpose, it's not their function, and they don't do it well when they try. But by having a citizens group who can examine the problems, who are known in the community, who serve, perhaps, in Santa Fe County, this is certainly true, they represent the various factions of the county that have concerns for prisoners such as, and I think the 10 or 11 member committee in Santa Fe is too large, I certainly agree with what Bill said, I would think seven would be adequate, but for example, they're appointed by the county commission, there is somebody representing the immigrant community, the homeless community, mental health community, the drug and alcohol service communities, there's a, there's a medical person, actually a physician, that's one of, and these positions are set up by the Santa Fe County resolution. I'm not suggesting that that pattern be followed, I'm just trying to give you an example of how it's done there. There's somebody from the juvenile, and somebody from adult abuse, women abuse center, pretty much covers the social service field in Santa Fe. And I'm sure you have organizations here in Grant County, probably not necessarily of similar size based on population, but certainly of interest. And so, those are the reasons that personally, I endorse these kinds of committees. They tend to be very helpful, I think overwhelmingly, certainly not without... They tend to be very helpful, I think overwhelmingly, certainly not without exception. The jail administrators, wardens, whatever you may wish, what you call them here, necessarily aren't thrilled with these committees, but the very fact that they have no authority whatsoever to make change, all they do is recommend. If it's chosen to be ignored either by the commission or by the jail administrators, so be it. But it does give the whole community a greater confidence in what's going on, because normally very little is known about what goes on in the jail, other than the jail itself, because there are no secrets in a jail. Rumors and facts spread quickly, within hours. I think expanding the website here would be a great step forward. The website for the jail, for the Department of Corrections, and I assume you call it that, maybe use a different name, that Santa Fe would be an example that one could look to. And it is important that, and I'll just dwell on one fact quickly. Many people say, "Well, we don't want to list who's being detained," because maybe somebody in Pod A finds out from some relatives on the internet that somebody, an arch enemy is in Pod C, and there'll be retribution, and that's the reason, that's the main reason usually given for not listing who you're holding. That is somewhat fallacious, to say the least. Who's been admitted or who's been discharged travels faster in a jail than it does on the internet. There are no secrets. This is just the way jails operate. But be happy to answer any questions anybody may have, but other than that, I vote for a committee.
Does he may have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate you, your, it's a very interesting proposal.
Well, let me add one thing. I think you may be aware that our ACOU chapter did begin a petition drive, just to, not as an official document, but as a way of gathering the sense of interest in such a commission. Basically, I've been the only one collecting signatures, and I've, at this point, collected somewhere between 250 and 300 signatures. And I plan to continue doing it for a while, because I believe this is, it's a way of providing an opportunity for me to communicate with members of the community about the need for this. I indicated to Ms. Webb and Ms. Robinson yesterday that I and other members of our ACOU chapter would be more than willing to either work with them in drafting a resolution or I could draft a draft resolution, submit it to them for review, and bring all that back to you. But I would like to see the county move forward on this. Thank you very much.
Okay, we've been going about a little over an hour and a half now, so can we take a brief pause?
Motion to approve.
Are those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. Call back to order the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting for July 23, 2015. We're moving down to agenda item J. We have several detention center policies, three of them here, that we went over on Tuesday. So J is approve or disapprove Grand County Detention Center Policies and Procedures Special Management for Inmates.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Grand County Detention Center Policies and Procedures Special Management Inmates.
Second. The motion is second to approve the Grand County Detention Center Policies and Procedures for Special Management for Inmates. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Grand County Detention Center Policies and Procedures, Use of Force and Restraints?
Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the Grand County Detention Center Policies and Procedures, Use of Force and Restraints.
Second. The motion is second to approve the Detention Center Policies and Procedures for Use of Force and Restraints. All those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. L, approve or disapprove Grand County Detention Center Policies and Procedures, Less Than Lethal Delivery System?
Motion to approve Grand County Detention Center Policies and Procedures, Less Than Lethal Delivery System.
Second. There's a motion, a proper second, to approve the Grand County Detention Center Policies and Procedures for Less Than Lethal Delivery System. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the lease or purchase of a new ambulance for the Gila Regional Medical Center? Jeff came in and gave us a lengthy discussion on that on Tuesday. What's the pleasure of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the lease or purchase of a new ambulance for the Gila Regional Medical Center, EMS.
I'll say, but that's a funny-looking ambulance.
It is funny, isn't it? It does look like a FedEx truck.
Eighteen miles at a gallon, that's pretty good.
Yeah, eighteen, that's good.
The motion is second to approve the lease or purchase of a new ambulance for the Gila Regional Medical Center. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye?
You think the sheriff would like to have some of the kind of shaped vehicles?
It does look like a daddy wagon.
Maybe the sheriff would like to save some gas.
Okay, contracts and agreements. Approve or disapprove agreement number A 1526, professional services agreement? Yes.
Yes, we do.
We'll do it again if we didn't, just in case. Approve or disapprove the lease or purchase of new ambulance? Are there any in favor? I think we did, but we'll make sure. Contracts and agreements. Approve or disapprove agreement number A 1526, professional services agreement with Luis Alvarado for services with the Grand County Surveillance Program?
Motion to approve agreement A 1526.
Second. The motion to approve agreement A 1526. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolution. Approve or disapprove addendum number one to the resolution R 1424 to include county-maintained road to CAP-1-15-451?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve addendum number one to resolution R-14-24.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve resolution R 1424. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Approve or disapprove resolution R 1520? Linda went over these budget adjustments with us on Tuesday. If you have any questions, is it be a good time to ask them? Otherwise, I would accept the motion.
Motion to approve R 1520.
Second. The motion is second to approve R 1520. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Page three. Isn't that how Harvey did it?
Now the rest of the story?
Rest of the story. Approve or disapprove resolution R 1521, Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments' Agreements and Dues for Fiscal Year, July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016, and designate the voting member and alternate. That's R, 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 R. Who's been our voting member since?
Gabe and... Oh, no, actually, we changed it to slash.
Gabe and Anthony, isn't it? Just, we're good with that?
That's fine.
Okay, would you accept the motion, then?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve myself, Gabe Ramos, as the voting member, and Anthony Gutierrez as the alternate, and also to approve resolution R 15-21.
There's a motion, a second, to approve resolution R 1521, designating Commissioner Ramos and Anthony Gutierrez as our voting member and alternate. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove resolution R 1522? Notice intent to consider an adoption of ordinance increasing the size of the Board of County Commissioners to five members pursuant to Article X, Section 7 of the New Mexico Constitution. Now, Abby Do, does this resolution have to pass unanimously?
No, the ordinance needs to pass unanimously.
Okay.
Motion to approve resolution R 1522.
Second. The motion is second to approve resolution R 1522. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove resolution R 1524, resolution creating the Loma Verde Estates Subdivision Improvement District? Did I skip one? What did I miss?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Approve or disapprove resolution R 1523, designating a representative and an alternate? I always do that one. Alternate pursuant to the cap entity joint powers of grant.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the resolution R-15-23 with you as our representative and also Anthony Gutierrez as our alternate.
There's a motion to approve resolution R 1523, designating Commissioner Caston as the voting representative and Anthony Gutierrez as the alternate. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I'm just glad I beat you to the punch.
All those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And I just want to say something, is that many of us in this room are seeing the hard work that Anthony had put into this project, and we appreciate all the work you have done and brought us up to the point that we are. Anthony, thank you very much.
Okay, T. Approve or disapprove resolution R 1524, resolution creating the Loma Verde Estates Subdivision Improvement District? We went over this on Tuesday.
Motion to approve R 1524.
Second. The motion is second to approve R 1524. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Can I get a motion to recess the Grand County Board of Commissioners?
So moved.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve, to recess the Grand County Board of Commissioners? All those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Call to order the Grand County Indigent Health Plan Claims Board. One item on the agenda, U. Approve or disapprove the health plan claims for June 30, 2015. 120 claims, all at Gila Regional Medical Center totaling $84,450.63.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the Health Plan Claims Indigent Fund for June 30, 2015.
Second. There's a motion, a second, for, to approve the Health Plan Claims for June 30, 2015. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Can I get a motion to adjourn the Grand County Indigent Health Plan Claims Board?
So moved.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to adjourn the Grand County Indigent Health Plan Claims Board. All those in favor, signify saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Call back to order the Grand County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner comments. Commissioner, do you have anything today?
No, just like to thank all the fire departments for their preparedness and thank goodness we didn't have a bad fire season so far, and hopefully we can continue to prepare. I do want to see or ask our manager, where are we with that sandbox project? Have you talked to the, with the fire sandbox that we have discussed before? Have we figured?
I discussed it briefly with Randy, and he's supposed to be looking into it and getting some more information for you to take a look at.
Great.
I'll follow up with him again.
Okay, please. Other than that, we had our parts and rec meeting yesterday. It went really well. There's a lot of discussion about future security at the civic center. We did involve the sheriff's office, and so thank you for having Mr. Flam come join us. There's a lot of great ideas coming out of this board, and hopefully we can have a good civic center and have it run properly when it comes to, to, hopefully having your all's help in the security and, or your all's guidance for that security on that building. That's basically all I have. Wish the best of luck to the 15, 16 girls, softball girls that are, I believe they just got to Louisiana today. They're representing the state of New Mexico. And also the 12, 11 and 12-year-old girls from Silver are representing the state of New Mexico over in Waco, Texas. So we wish them the best of luck. Hopefully, they can bring home that regional title. I don't think there's been a regional title won yet for the state of New Mexico, but in a long time. It is. And so, I wish them, both those teams, the best of luck. They've got some great girls playing. That's all I've got.
Yeah, I would just echo that. We've got some great youth in our community, and we're very proud of what they do. As far as the, my activities since our last meeting, of course, Two Calls Office, which is the Substance Abuse Treatment Center, is going along really well. We're now at the point of working on our RFP. We've having to rework it a little bit because of, of course, Senate Bill 42, there were some changes, and then some other things that our manager has been involved in, so we're having to look at it to see if in fact we want to involve it in our RFP so that the provider will have further direction. Also, as far as the site, I'd like to thank the city for becoming involved in that, and it's coming along really well. It's looking like we're going to be able to come in, just like we wanted to sometime in September, the site and the RFP coming in at the same time, and so that, that's what we needed as far as a good organization. Attended a dispatch meeting. You know, whenever I was reading the sheriff's proposal for his SOPs for the Use of Force, I thought about communication, and man, that is so important that, you know, whenever we go to those meetings and the sheriff is involved, and so is other people, heads of departments and stuff, to have good communication so that when we're in a situation like that, we can deal with it. And I know that's always a big topic for us, is to make, we are in a mountainous area, and there are dead spots, and it's being worked on all the time. Animal Ordnance, it's coming along very good. It's a lot slower than I thought, but man, there's just a lot of information. We've taken that thing and basically dumped the old one and got a brand-new one started. And we will, once we get to a point after our attorney looks at it and gives her a nod, then we'll start having some hearings for the public so that they can take a look at it and see if they have any input on it. I don't know why I did this, but I did. I've spent some years in alligators anyhow, but anyway, I went to a chief elected officials meeting in Crews a few weeks ago, and there was a topic that they brought up about employment of youth and adult dislocated workers, and I thought, that sounds like something interesting. Come to find out that they've been wanting to come to the southwestern part of New Mexico, and so I'm now working with a Ms. Montgomery from that agency and the mayor in Hurley, and we're putting together a training for all of our officials, mayors, commissioners and stuff in the four-county area, so that we can come together, I hope right here in this room, and so we can talk about the different programs that the workforce has for those individuals, so we can start trying to work on employment, because as I told my group yesterday at the Tukasa, you know, we've got to go beyond just the treatment. Once they get done with, with treatment, it's important for them to have job and housing. And so, we've got to start working on that. That's all part of that. Also, attended a COCC meeting. It's a program in the four-county area dealing with the youth and adult programs, and that was informative. And then, I'd like to remind everyone that Saturday, the Tyrone opened house. Maybe we can figure out a different time to hit that thing. I'm planning to have a gentleman I take care of, and he's in a nursing home. He's from Tyrone, so I told him I'd take him out there. He's interested in going, so I'm going to go out there Saturday morning in Tyrone. It's going to start at, what is it, 9:00 to 3:00? Something like that, 9:00 to 3:00. And I really invite all the citizens to go out there. You know, these volunteers are very special people. They put a lot of time and their own money into these things, and so let's go out and celebrate what they're doing and be a part of the celebration. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. So final budget meeting Monday, July 27 at 9:00 a.m., right? And the next commission meeting will be August 25 for the work session and the 27th for the commission meeting. Construction is going to start on the convention center, August, September now, we've moved it back another month. Okay, 12 months, 13 months, what was on the schedule? So it'll be closed for a little over a year. I agree, go to the, to the Tyrone Fire Department Saturday morning, 9 o'clock, for their new grand opening of their, of the reconstructed fire department, and I believe that's all I have today, so unless anybody has seconds, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, sing five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.